Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Escondido City Council. Please rise with us for a moment of reflection and remain standing for the flag salute.
Yes, please join me in a moment of reflection. We come together tonight to say thank you. Thank you for the privilege, the blessing, the honor it is to serve here in the city of Escondido. We come together tonight as diverse community, a community of backgrounds, different beliefs, different presence and different futures. We have one common goal, that is to betterment of this city. We come together tonight to seek guidance, wisdom and discernment during deliberations that transpire this evening. In doing so, we lift up Councilmember Fitzgerald, Councilmember Joe Garcia, Councilmember Christian Garcia, Deputy Mayor Martinez and Mayor White. May they be granted peace and wisdom as they lead our city into a bright and prosperous future. Amen.
I invite the allegiance to the flag from the United States of America and to very public, which stands one nation under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This meeting is called to order. Quick roll call, Councilmember Fitzgerald?
Present.
Councilmember Joe Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Christian Garcia?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Martinez?
Present.
And I, Mayor White, am here. Do we have a report out of closed session this evening?
No public report. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. We'll move on to non agenda public comments.
Yes, Mayor, we do have one. Maria Wallace.
Councilmembers, this is not a good evening. It's not a good time in America. We have a president who thinks he's a king, a party that has been silently aiding and abetting him. We just recited the Pledge of Allegiance, which states liberty and justice doesn't say for who, doesn't say for some, doesn't say for who, it says for all. And what are we seeing right now is a complete violation of this nation's ideals and principles. Mayor, you say the following in a podcast when talking about your roots, and I quote, "I can fund them. My family coming from Italy at the time, your family from China, but the sacrifices that they made for you and I to live this life that we're having now." What is the difference between your family immigrating here and those that have been abducted by mass ICE officers, who all they want is a better life for their families? What is the difference between your family, the families here in Escondido who are scared? Councilmember Christian Garcia, you say that you are not an active, that you're a council member. I want to tell you that you can do both. You say that you are for the Latino community, but where are you when they've been attacked by militarized Asians, ICE Asians, wearing plain clothes and driving armored vehicles? You're a teacher. What are you teaching your Latino students? To stay in the sidelines when their civil rights are under attack, when their communities have been dehumanized? What do you tell them? Councilmember Joe Garcia, the civil rights movement was led by faith leaders. What are you telling your congregation? What are you saying to your constituents? Are you okay how the Republican Party, your party, is treating our working undocumented brothers and sisters? You immigrated to Mexico, no question asked. Now you are a part of the party that called immigrants criminals. Councilmember Judy Fitzgerald, you proudly accepted endorsement from Dero Isa, Jean Desmond, Mike Morasko, Sam Abad, people like Dero Isa who called our undocumented community illegals, which is a term with a racist history. Also, former Mayor Sam Abad was proud of passing policies that made it legal for Escondido landlords to rent to undocumented immigrants. You used to identify as a Latina and coming from immigrant parents to get the seat you're sitting in, but the people I just listed and the policies they supported show your true colors. Thank you.
No further public on this item.
All right, and we have no proclamations and no presentations tonight, correct?
Correct.
All right, that brings us to our consent calendar. Tonight, items 1 through 8 are on consent. I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve those unless there's an objection. If not, I'll ask for a second.
I'll second.
Perfect. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
All right, on to our public hearings. Item nine, the fiscal year 2026 operating budget adoption. Open the public hearing and turn it over to our presenters.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Christina Holmes, Director of Finance. This public hearing is for the adoption of the fiscal year 2026 operating budget and annual appropriations limit. During the presentation, I'll share about the community workshops held this budget season, review the major budget additions, upgrades and reinstatements in the fiscal year 2026 citywide operating budget, review the projected revenue for this upcoming fiscal year and close with the appropriations limit calculation. This past year, staff presented on the city's finances and budget at three different meetings. Two meetings were held in person. The city also hosted a virtual workshop on May 8. After hearing a presentation about the city's financial structure and operating and capital budgets, attendees were encouraged to share their priorities by jotting their ideas down on Post-it notes and placing the idea geographically on maps by each city council district. Staff are currently reviewing that information and it will be shared at a future date. As we're working towards changing the city's budget process, the community feedback gathered at these workshops will be shared with the city council early in the budget season next The fiscal year 2026 citywide operating budget provides resources for one-time and annual investments, as well as reinstating or adding several staff positions across multiple funds and departments. One-time investments include funding to repair critical infrastructure and public safety maintenance, funding for a citywide customer service initiative, resources to research a smart city, economic development initiatives that include an ag tech innovation hub, property-based improvement district and real property consulting, funds for the redecreted golf course, a fleet services funding analysis, water and wastewater services, and funding for the replacement of two fire utility trucks, three pumpers and 37 police department vehicles. Annual investments also include funding to repair critical infrastructure and public safety maintenance, resources for the city council sister cities' internal travel program and supplies for community events for the mayor in each district, resources for an online community outreach tool and funding for the police department maintenance and operations budget. Initial funding for the ClimatTech Energy Project is included in the budget. A public hearing for the citywide energy roadmap program with ClimatTech was scheduled for June 25th. However, this has been delayed as the details of the contract and projects are continuing to be discussed with ClimatTech. Staff are now planning to bring the citywide energy roadmap program to the city council in August, along with the proposed financing plan. Since the budget workshop in May, one additional position has been added to the recommended operating budget that is reinstating a management analyst position for building maintenance, which was reclassified in fiscal year 2023. By restoring the management analyst position, this will ensure capacity to effectively implement the critical infrastructure projects funded this fiscal year and assist with the implementation of projects in ClimatTech's citywide energy roadmap. With the addition of that position, citywide, there are 27 recommended new staff positions, nine part-time positions to be upgraded to full-time and five positions that are reinstated from cuts in previous budget years. So for operating revenue for the general fund, this table shows the current fiscal year 2025 budgeted operating revenue, followed by the fiscal year 2026 amounts projected this upcoming fiscal year. Overall revenue is projected to be fairly flat compared to this fiscal year with a slight decrease of $40,560. During the May 21st budget workshop with the city council, we went through each category of revenue and the factors that are driving the anticipated increases and decreases this upcoming fiscal year. The most significant decreases are in sales tax and charges for services. Sales tax continues to decrease from the surge in spending and change in consumer behavior during the pandemic. In addition to potential inflation, interest rates and weaker consumer confidence, the impacts from tariffs on consumers and sales tax revenue is also unknown. The decrease in charges for services category of revenue is due to the end of the partnership with the Escondido Union School District for the before and after school program. In the prior fiscal year, the program was fully funded with $1 million by the district. That partnership ended this fiscal year, resulting in a reduction in the revenue of $1 million. This was partially offset by a decrease in the temporary part-time staff expenses for the recreation program. So with the addition of projected $38,484,150 from Measure I, the total projected sources of funds is $178,649,880 and total operating uses of funds are $171,507,390. As a result of the new resources provided by Measure I in November 2024, the fiscal year 2026 operating budget preserves the essential services and programs provided to our residents, businesses and visitors. However, it's important to recognize that operating revenue has not kept pace with the growing costs of providing city services, and as a result, the general fund long-term financial plan still projects annual deficits exceeding $10 million, growing to $24 million by fiscal year 2035, which creates a structural budget deficit. Despite multiple actions taken each year to address the structural budget deficit and the city's efforts to fund projects with grants and other sources of one-time funds, it has not been enough to meet growing costs and demands for services. The passage of Measure I provides funding for the next 20 years that will mitigate the impacts of this structural deficit and provide staff time to continue to explore additional ways to align revenues with expenditures. The last item for this public hearing is Resolution Number 2025-75 for the adoption of the annual appropriations as required by state law. This was adopted by California voters in 1980 and placed limits on the amount of proceeds of taxes the state and local agencies can appropriate and spend each year. The limit ensures that growth in government spending will be no faster than the growth in population and inflation. The calculated appropriation limit is almost $1.9 billion. An appropriation subject to that limit is $142 million, which is well below the calculated So that concludes staff's presentation. So we are requesting city council approval of adoption of Resolution Number 2025-74 approving the fiscal year 2026 annual operating budget and Resolution Number 2025-75 approving the appropriations limit for fiscal year 2026.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comments on this one?
We have one comment on this item. Victoria Nyack?
Do I have to state my name again? Okay. So I'm a resident of Escondido. I live in District 2. I believe that we really, at this time, need to focus on affordable housing for all residents. Every time I go to the store, it doesn't matter what store I go to, walking in here, I see people living on the street and I just feel like we're not doing enough to actually take care of them. So with that in mind, when I was looking through this budget, I just had one note. The line item under successor agency housing on page 200, and I'm hoping that this is a typo, rental subsidy program has been decreased by 90% from $37,000 to $3,700. It looks like one zero was just marked off. So if that was a typo, then I don't have a comment, but if it's not a typo, taking out resources like this, first of all, $37,000 for rental subsidies is going to help only a handful of people, but we have already so many people on the streets, taking out subsidies like this is just going to add to the problem. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll close the public hearing and first, I'll say thank you for the presentation. I don't necessarily have any questions as we just went over this, but I did want to say just to the community in general, thank you for entrusting the city with your, more of your precious tax dollars. I think the future was looking pretty bleak for the city and now all of these investments are going to make this the premier city in San Diego County, and I'm looking forward to seeing what comes from all these investments. So thank you very much, and I'll turn it over to my colleagues. Actually, before I do, I'll move to approve the fiscal year 2526 budget and ask for a Perfect. I'll turn it over to any of you who'd like to speak.
Thank you for the presentation. Can you go back to, I guess, just the list of everything that we're investing in with Measure I? This one right here? Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to point out to the public in general, like this is, this is going to be absolutely monumental in terms of services. One of the things that we've really been working on is development services, but it's also going to be, as everyone sees here, you know, we're looking at police, we're looking at fire, and I just want to thank the staff and everyone involved for following through with the commitment on putting our budget to good use to what we promised our public. So, you know, we mentioned, you know, better, better safety for public works, for, for business development, and we're seeing it here. So I just want to thank, I just want to point this out and thank everybody for, for being involved, that was involved in this. So thank you so much.
Either one of you? If not, Deputy Mayor?
I do.
Thank you for the presentation and all the work put into our budget. We know this takes a very long time and it starts as early as the end of last year. You mentioned, you mentioned the community meetings, and I know we held several, two or three of them this year, and I may have missed what you said about the input, that you're still gathering the input. Usually we, I believe usually we have that input ahead of time. Did the, did the process for that change by any chance this year?
So this was the first year at the budget workshops that we did the map exercise, where we actually had attendees write down their ideas and their priorities by council districts. So we are in the process of gathering that information and that will be shared with city council as long as it's available. This upcoming budget year, we are going to change our budget process, hopefully a budget workshops earlier, have that information before city council, before we're moving towards the budget presentations and the budget adoption.
Okay. So there was a new, a new activity introduced now that we have money with Measure I. Thank you taxpayers, thank you residents. And so, so now we're able to, to get more ideas and feedback from the community because now it's, you know, feasible in some cases. And so, yeah, I would just say, maybe, I don't know if that was communicated to the participants at the meeting, that that information would not be taken into consideration for this budget, not sure if that was or not, but I would definitely, I think that's great. And I'm a big fan of the budget workshops. I've always advocated for budget workshops. So, yeah, I would love to see this next year and, and us get the information ahead of time so we can actually review the information and consider adopting it into the budget for that year, for that next fiscal year. Thank you for that. And then at the last meeting, we, I had two questions and I want to thank Joanna, I don't know if she's here, if she is, hi Joanna, for getting back, back to us on that. So one of my questions was, we have hiring a long-range planner, and I've been informed that we have hired this person, they started this week, and their official title is Principal Planner, so I'm really happy about that. And then I also asked about the transportation priority list, the traffic priority list that the Transportation Committee oversees. There's an annual allotment of $50,000 for projects, and that amount has been the same amount for years. And so I know that you are looking into that and we, so that's fine that we don't have the information. I appreciate that you took that input and that you're looking into it, and I don't see any issues with the current budget, and I just, again, want to thank all the staff and all the departments for all your hard work, thank the community and invite you to get involved in our budget process next year, and I'm excited to see what you all have for priorities for us as well. That's all I have. Thank you. Oh, one more thing. There was someone who asked about the, the sub, that question. Is it possible to answer that? I don't know if you, if you have that information readily available?
I would defer to the Housing and Neighborhood Services Manager.
Okay.
Danielle Lopez. She's there.
Okay. All right.
We'll be able to provide a response.
Okay. So that's something I will look into and, you know, get more information on that. So thank you for, for, for asking that question.
Yeah, that was exactly what was in, on my notes, and I have an answer for you regarding that because we saw that on the CDBG funds that we, that were part of our homeless subcommittee discussion yesterday, and there hasn't been a decrease at all. That was one of the questions that I asked, and one of the follow-up questions, and was a little concerning to me, is that we have 10 spots that are open that no one has applied for, for rental assistance. So please put the word out, we have in the city about 10 spots available for rental assistance and they haven't been applied for. So that was one of the, the other questions that I had. So to answer your question, Councilwoman, that was the information that I received and I'm sure that Danielle can confirm that, but that's the part, that was part of our discussion yesterday. And the only other thing that I, and this is something that I've said on a regular basis, but over the years, we have seen an increase as to the structural deficit, and now I see that we're, some years will be into the $25 million. So we need to continue to be conservative, make sure that we save up some money from our budget. It's not just a spending budget, but it's also a saving budget because we will have a number of years that are going to be tough years. I believe that, that this is going to be an excellent year. I believe that it, it's just wonderful that the voters have entrusted us to be able to invest this money, but we need to invest this money and make sure that at the end of the 20 years, we were, we can turn around and look and say, wow, we did what the voters wanted us to do. So not to rain on anybody's parade, but we do have a 20 million, $25 million deficit a few years that we'll be dealing with, and if I remember correctly, over 12 years of a $20 million deficit. So that's all I wanted to remind. Thank you.
Yes, thank you again for the presentation, and you made it short and sweet. There were a lot of numbers out there, so thank you for that. Regarding the community feedback or the, the budget workshops, you had, we had three of them approximately?
Yes, we had three. We had two in person and then we held one virtual. The city hosted a virtual.
How many people participated approximately?
Great question. Approximately 10-ish, 10 to 12 on the Thursday evening. We did a Saturday morning in the Mitchell Room, a slightly smaller crowd, five to eight, if I recall correctly. The virtual one, I don't have that number, but we can provide that.
And do you think that community outreach as far as notifying them, it was enough advance notice, or how can we get more people to participate to really have a better representation of the residents?
From what I recall, our communications team did the social media outreach. It was posted on the city's website. Yeah.
All right. And then also, it was on slide 11, I don't remember if it's specifically there, but on this, and I, I was, I couldn't find it here, but you brought it up on, on this one. So the after-school program was cut out. How much was that exactly or approximately that it was costing the city?
The funding for the after-school program was $1 million, and that was to fully fund the program, to reimburse the city for the cost to provide the service.
And was it cut out just because of the cost or was enrollment really low?
It was part of the contract.
Oh, okay.
Piece of it.
Okay. Oh, are you coming up, Joe?
So Councilmember Fitzgerald, for the record, Joe Galart, Director of Public Works, I could elaborate on that. So we went out to RFP and we were not selected as a provider for the after-school program. So the YMCA will now be the new provider for the after-school program.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, my concern was that the kids wouldn't have anything to do after school and so, okay, that covers that. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much for your time and for the presentation. We'll go ahead and vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Awesome. Thank you, everybody. We'll move on to item 10, which is the five-year capital improvement program in fiscal year 2526 capital improve, capital improvement program budget. We'll open this public hearing and turn it over to the presenters.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Lynn Cruz, accountant for the city of Escondido, and with me is Jonathan Schabel, city engineer. Last week, we delivered an in-depth presentation of the preliminary five-year capital improvement budget on June 11th. Today, we are here to wrap up that discussion. Tonight, we are going to highlight some completed projects and programs, review fiscal year 2026 CIP budget, and then end with our staff recommendation. I'm now going to turn it over to Jonathan to go over some completed projects and programs for fiscal year 2025.
Thank you, Lynn. As part of the city's ongoing annual street maintenance program, 34 lane miles were resurfaced, 1,900 linear feet of sidewalk was replaced and 6,000 feet of bike lanes were refreshed or added in the east-south maintenance zone, shown as yellow here in the map. The east-south or ES maintenance zone is east of Ash Street, south of Valley Parkway and extending to the city limits to the east and south. At Ryan Park, this project replaced all existing metal halide lights on fields one through five with energy-saving LED light fixtures. In addition, the project installed four new light poles and 14 LED light fixtures on fields six and seven. All seven fields are now lit and can be utilized for nighttime games and activities. At Kit Carson Park, county grant funds were utilized to replace the playground equipment and provide a durable rubberized play surface. Two larger play structures were installed, one for ages two through five, and one structure is for ages five through 12. As part of the same grant-funded project, the playground equipment was replaced at Mountain View Park. This play area also includes two larger play structures, smaller features and a rubberized play surface. At Kit Carson Park, this project installed three new backstops and replaced about 3,000 linear feet of chain link fencing. These improvements were made at the Escondido Girls Softball League Fields and the multipurpose field at Kit Carson Park. And you can see here, the Citracado Parkway Extension Project constructed over half a mile of new roadway from Andreessen Drive to Harmony Grove Village Parkway. This project included a bridge over the Escondido Creek, along with landscape medians, bike lanes and a sidewalk. The Valley Parkway sidewalks project installed 1,100 linear feet of new concrete sidewalk and five concrete driveways on East Valley Parkway between Rose Street and Midway Drive. The project planted 33 trees to provide shade and other landscaping was, was planted to improve the aesthetics of the area. In an effort to create a more vibrant and welcoming downtown, Phase 2 of the Grand Vision Project has just been completed, and the city held a ribbon-cutting ceremony last Friday evening. This project widened the sidewalk on both sides of Grand Avenue from Maple Street to Juniper Street and provided space for outdoor dining. In addition, new decorative lighting has been installed to make Grand Avenue more inviting in the evening hours. The Phase 2 project also constructed two roundabouts, one at the Broadway intersection with Grand and another at the Calmia intersection. The public art process has begun for the center of the Broadway Roundabout. An artist will be selected by the end of this year and the artwork will be installed in 2026. Staff are also exploring options for aesthetic improvements at the Calmia Roundabout. We don't have a timetable for that yet, but we're working on it. The city of Escondido's trunk sewer mains were constructed in the 1950s. The City of Escondido's trunk sewer mains were constructed in the 1950s and convey raw sewage from the city to the Hale Avenue Resource Recovery Facility, also known as the Harf. The trunk sewer replacement project replaced, upsized, and realigned approximately 5,400 linear feet of existing trunk sewer main and approximately 1,200 linear feet of 8-inch diameter sewer main in five sections. These five identified sections are generally located between the intersection of Quince and Norlack Avenue and the Harf. This small project installed a much-needed shade sail over the spectator area of the Washington Park Pool. In addition to new dive blocks and epoxy flooring throughout the interior locker rooms and offices was constructed. The emergency fencing of Escondido Creek between Citracato Parkway and Harmony Grove Road will be completed by the end of this month. The project installed over 4,400 linear feet of cut-resistant and climb-resistant steel-wire mesh fencing. When the Harmony Grove fencing project is complete, staff will be offering councilmembers tours of the completed project. The Juniper Street Lighting Project installed seven standard streetlights and 26 decorative pedestrian lights on Juniper Street between 2nd and 9th Avenues. These lights provide a safer nighttime pedestrian environment connecting the old Escondido neighborhood to the downtown area. We have had one resident express their concern regarding the brightness of the pedestrian lighting. While we are waiting for delivery of a light shield, we are mitigating that by temporarily disconnecting the light closest to the resident. We're also working with our lighting consultant to analyze the brightness of the pedestrian lights.
As we reviewed on June 11th, here's a list of projects that staff recommends to be funded in fiscal year 2026. This slide shows existing parks and recreation, public works, water and wastewater utilities projects. Here is a listing of existing street projects that staff recommends to be funded in fiscal year 2026. As reviewed on June 11th, this slide presents ongoing library and wastewater utility programs recommended for the fiscal year 2026 funding. These recurring programs support infrastructure planning, oversight, and maintenance. The following street-related programs are requesting fiscal year 2026 funding for ongoing maintenance and upgrades. Staff recommends allocating $2 million in unrestricted Measure I funds to support the city's street program that will result in eight additional lane miles. This concludes staff's presentation. It is requested that city council authorize staff to move forward with the fiscal year 2026 to 2030 Five-Year Capital Improvement Program and Budget for approval.
Thank you both for the presentation. Do we have any public comments on this item?
None.
None? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, thank you both for the presentation. I did not realize that sewer project was basically a mile of pipeline. That's pretty impressive. Um, loving the new parks, all the improvements throughout the city. I am happy to, uh, make the motion to approve all three resolutions, uh, 2025-76-77 and 78. I'll ask for a second and then open it up for discussion. Has a second? All right. Do you want to speak next?
Um, I know we've, well, thank you for the presentation first off. I know we talked about this last week. We had the RGIS map that, um, I think was presented to us. Can you remind me when is that going to be presented? I know I've talked to a few constituents about it, and they're pretty excited to see it. Do we have a estimate of time?
So, um, as we said, after the beginning of the fiscal year, we'll get the word out. Um, but I, I don't want to commit to a specific date.
Sure.
As we're, we're working on data integrity as we spoke before, but early on in the fiscal year, we will release that, uh, and we will make a big deal out of the release.
All right, that's all I got to communicate. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you for the presentation. Uh, all of these are great, and I just want to uplift a couple that, um, really stood out. Um, I was there at Washington Park, uh, it was during the Earth Day event when they were installing the shade sails, so really great, um, because Escondido gets so hot. So, anything we can do to keep our community safe from heat, um, really excited about that. And then, what a game changer, the sidewalks on Valley Parkway. Such a game changer. That part, that, that, first of all, Valley Parkway is a hub for so many small businesses. There's so much activity, there's just so much going on there. And because it was always black, people's cars, I mean, how many of us had our cars go through thinking we were on, you know, exiting on the correct side, but we went over the sidewalk because it was black? So, lots of car damage and, you know, out, you know, driving through that. So, anyways, game changer, saving our cars, making it look beautiful. A lot of people walk in that area, so just, it looks beautiful. So, I'm really excited about that project, and I wanted to say thank you and just say how grateful I was when, when I saw that was completed. Thank you.
Great presentation. I really enjoyed it. It's nice to have a reminder of the things that have been completed. Uh, in government, it's very easy, just that things work slowly, and to forget that these things have been completed. And I drive every day a number of times on East Valley, and I, just to piggyback on what Councilmember Martinez, or Deputy Mayor Martinez, uh, said, i- it is a game changer. And I would see that change every day, and I was like, wow, this is really great. Thank you for that vision and that commitment to take care of it. So, anyway, thank you so much, and, uh, that's all I just wanted to say.
Councilmember? Nothing? Okay, we have a motion and second. Thank you both again for the presentation. We'll go ahead and vote.
Voting is open. Motion approved, 5-0.
All right, that's the end of our public hearings.
One last public hearings.
Oh, is there? Is the last one a public hearing?
Yes. Yeah, plan development.
Oh, there we go. Okay, then we'll move on to the Plan Development Permit and Design Review Permit for construction of 35 multifamily dwelling units. And open this public hearing. The time is yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Deputy Mayor, and good evening, uh, councilmembers. Ivan Flores, Principal Planner with the Planning Division, and I'll be presenting on item 11 before the city council this evening. Item 11 is a request to construct the 35-unit multifamily building located at 339 South Escondido Boulevard, and includes the provision of four very low-income units. The project is located at the northwest corner of Escondido Boulevard and West 4th Avenue, and is approximately .2 miles south of the downtown core. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing building, which is occupied by four residential dwelling units and an auto dealership. The demolition of the four existing units will require the applicant to provide replacement units in accordance with Senate Bill 330, and the project has been conditioned to ensure compliance with state law. As described in the staff report, the project is a request for a Plan Development Permit for the ground floor residential uses as required by the downtown specific plan, a design review permit for the proposed site landscaping and buildings design, and a density bonus request to exceed the allowable density permitted by the downtown specific plan. On May 27, 2020, 25, the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of the project. However, the commission had general concerns with the project's eligibility for AB 2097, which allows a reduction in off-street parking spaces and the reduction in open space as an incentive or concession in accordance with state density bonus law. Their concerns are discussed in detail within the staff report, and they requested a link to the meeting be included in the city council staff report. Due to, due to the requirements of state law, the burden falls on the city in both cases to deny the incentive or concession and/or deny the project's eligibility, eligibility for AB 2097. The project includes construction of a 34,463-square-foot building and will provide 16 off-street parking spaces. Primary access to the building is located at the intersection of South Escondido Boulevard and West 4th Avenue. The project includes a variety of construction materials, including but not limited to CMU precision block wall with a smooth finish in various colors and brick veneer. The building is approximately 54 feet in height and is designed as a five-story building with patios and balconies along Escondido Boulevard and West 4th Avenue. The project also includes landscaping along the project's frontage, including but not limited to street, trees, and pedestrian lighting. In accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, the project is categorically exempt from further environmental review under CEQA Section 15332, also known as infill development projects. As detailed in the notice, uh, draft, notice of exemption, approval of the project would not result in any significant effects related to traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality. Approval of the project also includes the environmental determination for the project. As of today, city staff has received one public comment. The public comment was in support of the project. Based on the analysis contained in this staff report and the presentation provided the city council, city staff recommends that the city council introduce ordinance number 2025-04 and adopt resolution number 2025-68, approving the project as condition. That concludes staff's presentation, and the applicant is present for any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we have any public comments on this item?
No public comments on this item, however. Is the applicant, uh, present? And if they are, they have 10 minutes.
They are.
Yeah, they have 10 minutes if they'd like.
Thank you, Ivan. My name is Kyle Kuruthers. I am the applicant for the project. Nice to see you all.
Did you have any kind of presentation or statement you'd like to make?
I think Ivan did a great job. I'm here for any questions. Uh, I presented at the Planning Commission a couple weeks ago, which went well, and the project was approved by them, so I'm here for any additional questions or comments.
Okay, perfect. I'm going to close the public hearing, and, uh, does anybody on the council have questions for the applicant? My only question is, are, are you from around here?
I am from Orange County. I live in North County San Diego for the last 11 years.
Perfect, thank you. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. But we might, yeah, we might ask you to, someone might ask you a question. I just had a question about the plant, the, um, the Planning Commission, it was a 4-1 vote, I believe. Could you share?
That is correct.
Could you share who the commissioner was and what was, uh, the reason for the, that they didn't support it? I'm curious as to what their argument was.
Yeah, so as indicated in the YouTube video, I believe it was Commissioner Stevie, um, and their general concern was the omission of the open space and the, uh, the use of state density bonus law to reduce that requirement.
Okay. Got it, thank you. Yeah, that, that's definitely, I know something that's, I'm not a big fan of is the reduction of open space, but I know that with these types of projects, um, that's often something that, that is taken away. Um, so, yeah, I, I love, I would love to have the open space, but I, I don't, that, it's not a deal breaker for me. The one, um, question that I did have was, you mentioned in the presentation, Ivan, SB 330, that any, uh, any units that are on a property must be replaced with a new development. Is that correct?
There are various components of Senate Bill 330. One of those, uh, requirements is the replacement of protected units. If those units are occupied by a very low-income or low-income household, the applicant is required to replace those in kind.
Got it.
So, the, uh, three of those units were deemed to be protected units.
Oh, good, okay, I didn't know that. And then, so, and then this project has four, right?
Correct. Yeah, so we're removing three, delivering four affordable, 35 total. So, I think part of the reason for the code is you can't tear down 10 and deliver two. That would be a loss of eight.
Right.
We're tearing down four and delivering 35, four of which are affordable.
Okay. But really, so you're providing one extra affordable?
That, that is correct. There are only three protected units.
So then, the one extra that you, so when, so if, if you're utilizing the density bonus program, from what I understand, 10% of that has to be affordable, correct?
There, there is a minimum requirement based on the affordability level.
Okay.
Um, and the applicant is providing 17% affordable based off of what the base allowance is.
Yeah, 10 would be 3.5, and we have four, so.
Okay, so you have the different AMI categories for affordability? Is that what I'm, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
Based on California state density bonus.
Okay, got it. I was thinking just only four of them would be, you know, below, not, you know, I thought the rest were going to be market, so.
Yeah, that's correct. The rest are market.
Okay, they are.
Yeah.
So, is that like, is that that 120 AMI?
There's full market.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, what is, um, four of them are required to meet state density bonus, right?
It's, I believe, for this income category, so density bonus is broken up into multiple, uh, categories, and one of the, two of those are very low-income and low-income. And so, the applicant is required to provide three very low-income units because three of those are protected units out of the four existing units.
I guess what I'm trying to understand is, because he's replacing, not counting the ones that are being replaced, is the additional one that's being added through this project, are they using the, the former, um, number there to kind of use it in their new number? Does that make sense? Like, are they, are they, if, 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 for example, those three didn't exist, would four be the number that they would have to have?
May I try and reword that?
Yes, you know what I'm trying to ask, right?
Yeah, so what, what, I think what she is asking is, there were previously three, now we're getting an additional one. Is that additional one enough?
Right.
To fulfill the obligations to the density bonus law?
Yeah, we're going straight.
Are we maximizing what?
Yeah, we're, we're straight down the middle with the California density bonus. So, you take the ba, the base density times 150%, gets you your max density, and then you calculate the number of affordables that are required. We have met every single requirement, as well as replacing the current units. So, yes, we've, we've done all the, the metrics.
Okay, so, yes, Veronica, then my colleague wants to chime in too.
I, I think, which, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, the question is, there's three that were obligated to be filled, and then to meet the, regardless, right? And then plus the extra four in order to meet that 10%.
So, if I could interject to clarify this for everyone, I'm Veronica Monas, I'm our city planner. So, there are two state laws in play on this project. Senate Bill 330, which requires, uh, when protected units, as Ivan described, are proposed for demolition, they be replaced in kind as part of the project. State density bonus law is another separate state law that allows for a developer to tap into added density as well as incentives, concessions, and waivers from development standards when they provide a certain percentage of affordable housing on-site. It's a sliding scale program, so depending on the amount of, um, in, the income level that is proposed, you can obtain a certain percentage of density bonus. In this instance, under state law, you are allowed to overlap those. So, Senate Bill 330 states that you have to replace those protected units. There are four existing units on the project site. Only three of those four units qualify as a protected unit, ergo, those three units need to be replaced. Because the applicant is also invoking density bonus, they are able to overlap those three replacement units with their density bonus requirement of affordable units on-site, of which they need to provide four. Or three.
Yeah, and if I could chime in one other item, the current units are not currently protected. That's just based on the current income of the tenants. So, if a tenant were to move out on their own, and someone moved in that made half a million dollars, right? So, the new units are deemed protected, right? The current units are not. So, it's just based on the current income of our current tenants, if that makes sense.
Okay, thank you, yes. And that's the word overlap, so it is being bundled. And, yeah, so it's really kind of just really one affordable extra, that's, um, but I, but that's what the, the law states, that's.
Yeah, I see it as four new affordable.
I wish it was more, but, yes, okay. Well, it's a dealership now, right?
Right, it's, it's four, four very small.
It's a dealership, yes.
You know, antiquated units in a, a car dealership, yes.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I, I definitely think, you know, I would love to see more affordable units, but I feel, you know, I, I would support the project because it does bring housing, additional housing that we desperately need. It does have some affordability, um, even though technically it's one additional. Um, but I, other than that, I will, um, I don't, I'm, you know, I will support the project.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, and thank you for clarifying that. It gets very confusing with these formulas and how they calculate things.
Yeah, there is a lot of back and forth. It is confusing, um, but yes.
But these will be deed restricted, right?
That's correct.
So, the, the good news is, there'll be at least four deed restricted, which right now is just people living in them are, you know, low-income, but they're not deed restricted. So, this at least protects that for the future.
Correct. Yeah, if the current residents moved out, it would reset. So, I think it's a win, you know, to keep those four deed restricted, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. So, these four, they're going to be very low. So, these four, they're going to be very low-income, is that right?
That is correct.
So, is that 40% median?
I believe so, yeah.
And is that how you got the density bonus of, I guess, 12 extra units, right?
Correct, yeah, it's 150% of the base density.
Okay, so otherwise you'd have around 23 units, and now you've got it to 35.
Yeah, I think that's correct math, yeah.
Okay. And so, with those extra units that we're putting in there, have you done anything regarding parking, to address the parking?
So, the parking, obviously, has been a challenge. We've maxed out, it's only a 10,000-square-foot lot, plus or minus. It's not feasible to go underground, it's not feasible to go two levels, so we did everything we could to get 16.
Is that why you did the extra units, or that's why you did the extra affordable unit in order to get the waiver, to waive the parking requirement?
Part of the density bonus is you get a handful of waivers.
Yeah, so that was intentional. So, the purpose of having that intentional affordable unit is to get the vote, to get the waiver in order to bypass the parking laws, right?
The density is the major motivator of using density bonus. By providing additional units, some of which are affordable.
Yeah.
You can give incentives, one of which we use is parking.
Is parking. So, where do you expect to have the park, these people to be parked in?
Yeah, so another thing I would mention about the project, if you look at the unit mix, it's primarily one-bedroom and studios. There's a couple of reasons we did that. A big motivator for that was parking.
Right.
If we were to deliver two and three-bedroom units, you can figure two and a half cars per unit.
Right.
When I look at how many studios and one-bedrooms we have, I figure, nobody has a crystal ball, most of the studios will be single-occupied, a majority of the one-bedrooms will be single-occupied, there may be some young couples in there. So, if you figure one and a half cars per unit, that was a big, you know, we thought deeply about the parking.
So, we're talking about 50 cars then, that we're adding, and only 16 are available?
I would hope for less, but yeah, it's better than two and a half.
It's going to be around 50.
Yeah.
And what about the open space? So, the open space was also, you, we used a waiver for the open space in order to?
Right, again, to the open space, they're required, you know, I'm not going to quote directly, 10,000 square feet, and it's a 10,000-square-foot lot, so we would have to build a five-story garden, basically.
Okay.
Yeah. So, it's just not, we did everything we could, it's not feasible.
So, we're looking at a concrete jungle with extra parking, and the parking, essentially people are going to be parking at neighboring businesses, because that's the only other option that we have.
Yeah, West Fourth has some pretty ample parking, if you, you know, there's a church across the street that's only occupied on the weekends, and, yeah. It's a walkable area.
Well, that would only, that would only be if they would allow them to park there.
So, the major drivers, it's within the required distance to public transit.
Okay, Councilmember.
To clarify, for the record, the project is invoking a state law called Assembly Bill 2097 for the purposes of parking, which says if you are within half-mile of a qualified transit stop, and you're a qualifying project, which this would be a qualifying project, you are not, jurisdiction cannot require parking minimums for the project unless certain standards are met, and that burden of proof falls on the city to meet that standard, they are a high-bar threshold. So, the project, to clarify, does not have any requests for off-site shared parking agreements, so the parking that would be provided as part of this project is only the 16 spaces on-site.
Yeah, and thank you so much for that, I do appreciate the clarification, especially for the public. And, you know, I'm familiar with the state laws and how the city is essentially tied, our hands are tied by the state laws. I just want to raise our concerns with this. My personal qualms, this is in my district, and this is going to be a big burden for neighboring businesses. I don't like what I'm seeing. I do appreciate the increase of affordable housing, but there's a lot of issues here, so, that's all I wanted to raise, thank you.
Yeah, hang on one second. Okay, I have a question. There was some, I read about some dialogue at the Planning Commission, and one of the questions they had brought up was, how do you measure to the transit station? Can you talk just a little bit about that?
Yeah, yeah, of course. So, there was recently an advisory put out by the Department of Housing and Community Development on how that measurement's supposed to be done. And so, typically, you wouldn't measure it from property line to property line of the closest quality transit center that qualifies for that law, so it's.
Basically, as the crow flies?
As the crow flies, that is correct.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Yeah, I'm with my colleague on this one, I have some concerns, and I guess, question, did you ask the church if they could use their parking lot? Or are you just volunteering them?
No, yeah, not volunteering anyone, it's, they don't, they don't own the parking on West Fourth.
My issue is, developers coming to a city that they really have no stake in, taking a quarter-acre lot, putting as many units there as possible, and leaving the rest of us to pick up the pieces. Just down the road from here, right next to the transit station, is a complex that has affordable units, and one of the one or two bedrooms, I can't remember which one, but they have five cars. Everybody has a car nowadays, even, even lower-income people. And I'm looking at, the four affordable units are all studios, correct? And the lowest rent looks like it's $1,500. For a single occupant right now, that's still not very affordable. So, I mean, I appreciate what you're trying to do in one sense, but on the other sense, this is just going to be a giant headache for the city, it's going to cause all kinds of problems in that area. Yeah, and to be frank, I don't think you're too worried about it, I think this is, this is money, and this is the way that it works, and everybody, everybody leverages state laws to their benefit, so I get what you're trying to do, but as of right this second, I am not supportive of it, so, thank you. Councilmember?
No, actually, you covered something I wanted to say, thank you.
Yeah, I guess just as a comment to that, the zoning is provided by the city of Escondido, it's 100 units to the acre. I mean, I didn't choose the zoning there. We've done everything we can to provide parking.
No, I know, 100 units an acre, that'd be 23 and a half units.
Right, in the state.
I would be all right with that.
Yeah.
But anyways, thank you, I appreciate it.
All right. I was just going to mention, I'll echo a little bit from what you heard from your planning staff, is you are bound by state law, there are requirements in terms of making a record with substantial evidence of certain findings, I don't know that those findings have been met yet. Well, I completely appreciate the comments that you're making, the concerns that you have, you are bound by state law with respect to the concessions and waivers, and state law with respect to parking, so, just as a reminder.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you. It's always good to have an attorney present. Any other questions or comments?
I guess my question is, what if we don't approve it? Do we, do we go into litigation, do we have to figure out?
Well, that will certainly be up to the applicant, I won't speculate as to what they would do, but you raised the specter of being, of the subject of litigation for failing to follow state law.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, I appreciate the comments of my colleagues, because that is a pet peeve of mine, the reduced parking and all of that, I've, I share, I empathize and share those frustrations, but I have, you know, I, speaking to what our city attorney says, it's something that we're, we're bound to because of, you know, state law, so, that, that's, that's the double-edged sword of when, when cities are bound to state rules, and we don't have that local control. The silver lining in this is that it does bring housing to a space that is, you know, I think, underutilized, with just a few cars in the dealership, so I do feel like it will house people, and yes, rent is, the rent is too high, I know, as a renter in the city, it's ridiculous, but I'm going to move to approve staff recommendation and the project, so I'll move to approve.
I'll second, and I just want to say, trying to look at it, you know, trying to look at it from a different lens, the walkability to the school is there, there's bus transportation is there, grocery store's about five blocks away, the open space, I guess the school is there, and then also that exercise area off of Broadway and Third, which is two blocks from there, so, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Did we get any community input? Did you survey, did you talk to businesses, neighboring businesses, or neighbors around there?
We did a traffic study, we post, you know, for public comment, we had one, one comment in support. Yeah, it wasn't required, to my knowledge.
All right, if there's no other questions, we'll go ahead and vote. Thank you.
Mayor, may I, again, one additional thought?
Please do.
So, to the extent the council has more questions with respect to potential litigation, if you want to continue the item, and we can have a closed session matter once agendized, that would be one way to handle this. If you, sounds like you have questions, and I think perhaps we can give you some more information, should you like that.
I'm seeing two head shake. Let me look at this way. No shake, that's a maybe.
I guess I want to do my colleagues, would my colleagues like to continue this, to have a full session?
So, I'm looking to my left and right, and I think I see enough votes for this to pass, so I don't want to waste anybody's time. I would, I would be more than happy to continue it, just to continue it, but I'm not going to do that, so, why don't we go ahead and vote, and then if it does fail, somebody, one of the people on the winning side of that can re-agendize it, and we'll go from Oh, shoot, I voted the wrong way now.
Let me refresh the voting.
So used to hitting.
So, voting is open, you can refresh yours, and should be able to. Yeah, voting is open, I'm seeing, I'm seeing the results coming through. Okay, motion approved, 3-2. Mayor White, Councilmember Garcia.
All right, thank you, sir, for your time, thank you both for your time. That brings us to the end of our meeting, does anybody have anything they'd like to add to a future agenda? Oh, I do. Sorry, forgot, hang on one second. I'd like to request that the city council take a position on AB 652, which essentially changes the way appointments are made to the Air Pollution Control District here in San Diego County.
I'll second.
Perfect, thank you. Anybody else? All right.
Will we have a presentation on that, when it comes, hopefully?
I would be happy to give you a presentation on it.
Okay, good, because I'm not on the board anymore, so I don't know what, what that is, thanks.
If there's nothing else, Councilmember Fitzgerald, your report?
Yes, on Thursday, coincidentally, I went to the San Diego Air Pollution Controlled Governing Board meeting, there's a lot of things that are starting to shift there, and my goal, a lot of people that are smaller cities, our goal is to still have our vote count as much as the bigger cities, because, as I said before, air, the air quality doesn't just stay within any city border, so we need to have a voice in our city. Friday, the Grand Avenue Phase Two completion event, the ribbon-cutting, the community celebration was fantastic, but I won't talk everything about it, because we were all there and we saw things, it was just amazing, seeing how many people showed up, the feel was just, people didn't have to say anything, they just wore it on their faces, and people were out, sidewalks were crowded, it was just a really exciting time, and there were, the cars were actually cruising grand instead of just being parked, so that was really, really cool. Also, I was able to go in and talk to some of the restaurant owners, there's two new restaurants I stopped in to visit, so it's Upper East, which is a restaurant and bar, they have a great smash burger, by the way, they're very excited to be in this community, I, again, support local restaurants, local businesses, small businesses, and then also, I ate a lot that night, because I also went to Farangi, I think it's called, it's an Indian restaurant, where Vins and Fusion used to be, it's completely open, it is, it's a food and tapas bar, very exquisite food, pool tables, it's just something to really bring out, bring the family, friends, so there's a lot going on there. There was just such a good feel, and I met people from Temecula, North Park, from Oceanside inward, the 78, all the way to Valley Center, that just came to enjoy Escondido, so I just wanted to say, Escondido, we are back, so, really exciting time. On Friday, the California Center for the Arts is going to be having an opening celebration of the Exicana Art Show, so it's going to be a lot of Chicano artists that are going to be showcasing their art there. Saturday, this Saturday, I keep bringing it up, because this is very important, the Children's Discovery Museum's going to be celebrating 25 years here in Escondido, it's going to be from noon to 3:00, I would encourage you all to go and celebrate with them, bring the kids. Also at 5:00 PM, and I think it's important to really get engaged and participate in, you know, organizations here in Escondido that really impact people that live here. So, the Brothers of Six is going to be holding a fundraiser, this will be benefiting the Sampa Squaw Academy, that is for teenage, high-school-age foster kids, and it's going to be a suitcase drive, so, these kids, when they go from home to home, or even when they age out, they're given a bag, one of those big green trash bags, and they really don't have anything to really call their own that they can take with them, except for what's in a trash bag, so their identity is what they're carrying in that trash. So, if you really want to participate, you don't have to go to the dinner, drop off the suitcases, or get ahold of me, and I'll, I'll find a way to get them from you, this is really important, let's, let's take care of those that are less fortunate and have gone through a lot, that are in our community. And that's it for me, thank you.
I was also at the Grand Avenue ribbon-cutting, and I'll just ditto to what my colleague has said, it was a very awesome event, the energy, it was incredible. I also had a Cal City's Public Safety Committee meeting during this period of time, Father's Day was on Sunday, Happy Father's Day to all the fathers, ECDEV Subcommittee and Homeless Subcommittee this week. That concludes my report.
Awesome. If you were not at Cruisin' Grand and the ribbon-cutting for the Grand Avenue Vision Project this past Friday, you really missed out. There was a lot of people that came up to me and said that they were not initially supportive of the construction or the roundabouts, and then after it had opened and everybody was out there, absolutely loved it. It was one of the best nights, I think, a lot of people have had in a very long time, so, thank you all for participating, please join us this Friday at Cruisin' Grand. I, too, had the Economic Development Subcommittee, Homeless Subcommittee, Sandag Meeting, and then this Saturday, from 12:00 to 2:00, as Councilmember Fitzgerald said, is the 25-year celebration for the Children's Discovery Museum, I'll be issuing a proclamation, please come and join us for the festivities. Thank you. No, absolutely not. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. It just triggered what you said, that a lot of people came up to you about on Grant. I had a chance to chat with Steve regarding that, and he told me it was one of the top five in the 25 years that they've been doing this, so it was very, very good.
We didn't leave till 8:15 that night, and the sidewalks were still packed and cars were still cruising, so it was awesome.
All right, thank you. Yeah, so, same thing, I've been hearing just great things about what's happening in town from constituents, people, I actually met a guy just at a, at a bar, and he didn't know who I was, and he started talking and saying how great things are around here, and I was just giving him a thumbs up, so, I think there's a lot of excitement in the air, and I think we all feel it. I went to the All-Star Game on, in Escondido, so Escondido's hosting the All-Star Little League around here, so I went to their opening event on Saturday morning, met with some parents, it was a really cool event, went to the American Legion for Flag Day, they had a really nice event there, they gave a whole history about the American flag and what it means, really, really nice. And then I went yesterday to the Escondido Chamber Mixer for the young professionals, I had my little guy, who's two, and so he was the youngest professional there, but it was a really cool event, you know, just being able to really support the, the businesses here, have a network, and then show just in general how, how supportive we are, how excited we are to have new businesses here, and how we really are looking, we're pro-business city right now, and I think people see it and feel it. And as always, thank you to my community for the privilege of serving.
All right, yes, Cruisin' Grand was awesome, and the ribbon-cutting, it was really great to see so many people there, and kudos to the staff who designed the really cool Grand Ave logo and stickers, we were giving stickers out that night, and it's, if you don't have one, definitely get one, if we still have some left, it's awesome. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to attend the Escondido Fire Department's promotion ceremony, where they celebrate the, the new staff hires, along with their families, and promotions, so that was a beautiful ceremony held here in council chambers. This Friday, I have a San Diego River Park JPA meeting, we will be voting on the budget, and then I will also be at the Chicana Exhibit on Friday, it's the opening reception, and that exhibit will go through November, and I'm really excited about this exhibit, because our community really.
our community really, just, it, it kind of reminds me of the last exhibit that we had, where it was the most well-attended exhibit, and so I feel like this one is going to be very popular, and there's going to be over 60 works in it, so definitely check it out, and it's free on Friday for the opening reception, so come check it out. Saturday's going to be a busy day, I will be at the, stop by the history, Escondido History Center's Open House, that starts at noon, and then I'm going to cross the street and go to the 25th Anniversary of the San Diego Children's Discovery Museum, and then it's also Juneteenth, so Happy Juneteenth this week, and so I will be participating in the Juneteenth Celebration later in the afternoon, hosted by the NAACP North County Chapter, and let me see if there's anything else I missed. And then just one thing, you may have seen on social media that we have some PSAs going around, reminding the public that fireworks are illegal in Escondido, unless you're a professional and you're hired for this 4th of July Celebration, you should be not setting off fireworks, and so we do have yard signs, so if anybody wants to put a yard sign on their property, or you know of a, you have permission of a property owner on a corner that has good visibility, I know that the city will make available signs reminding our community that fireworks are not allowed in the city. That's all, thank you.
City manager?
Nothing to report.
Fantastic. Any public comments?
None.
All right, thank you, everybody, for attending tonight, this meeting is adjourned.
To be allowed to come up and ask a question, you have to submit a form? Yeah, I wanted, I wanted to- Oh, oh, well, okay, well, it was, it was-
Hang on just one second before you begin. That, that's, we can do that, right? Yeah, okay, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Yeah, really quickly, I, I've been having a, a lot of difficulty with, with law order and the medical industry, and I worry, I worry that, that, the, the creation of these new technologies in these industries, and the lack of the utility of these technologies is what ultimately causes the downfall of industry and education. And I want to know if this was started in Escondido, I know neighborhood health clinics, and I know they're all over Escondido, I also know it looks like some of the real estates are shutting, shutting down, but that lawyer, that, that, that lawyers would be, after these lawsuits I wish were non-existent, lawyers were put at the top of the medical clinics, and doctors were brought into the high middle of law offices, instead of putting the lawyers at the bottom, and, and having a patient meet with a lawyer, and, and, and go over a bit of his, his rights, you know, I fill out a form about why, why I'm sick, or, or why, what, 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 what is causing me, and, and then I get absolutely no treatment, because a nurse does all, tries to get me to do a bunch of tests and things that, that result in nothing, because of not having a lawyer talk to me about what right or paperwork I need to sign in order to receive the medications that are correct for my, my illnesses and, and, and the treatments I need. The other thing, I ran into a college student, maybe a college graduate, yesterday at the park, park, actually, the little street, street fair, and, and he happened to, we happened to get to talking about Bitcoin, now this is, this is a really important thing for the future, that, that it takes a very special type of person to understand, most people, most people can't do anything that has never been done before.
I hate to interrupt you, in, in fairness to the other speakers today, I've got to cut you off there at three minutes, but I'd be happy to talk to you after the meeting.
Okay.
Which is ending right now.
Okay, all right, thank you.